Are we ready to get started?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, let's start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
....................................
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
..................................................................
So, we're going to skip D at this time, which is executive session, and go to E, public session, actually G, minutes review and approval of the March 15th, 2018, regular minutes of the Board of Education. Is there a motion?
Motion. Set.
First by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Huff.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Presentation and recognition.
We have, well, first, I'd like to present a representative from, Mr. Yost came in, and I would like to present this to Mr. John Zinger. It is an Ohio Auditor of State Award presented to the school district, actually. So, he stopped in, and I said that I would present it to John, so.
Okay, Mr. Zinger.
Mr. Zinger, congratulations.
Everybody in district contributed to this award.
Can you read what the award says, Mr. Zinger, so that the audience can hear?
Ohio Auditor of State Award presented to Jackson-Milton Local School District. This award is presented for excellence in financial reporting in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and compliance with applicable laws for the fiscal year ended 2017. The citizens you represent, I'm getting glasses, by the way, too. The citizens you represent are well-served by your effective and accountable financial practices. So, it's everybody, they contribute, all the people contribute, so we're good.
Well, we appreciate everything you do.
It's a team award.
Since John's not gonna brag, the numbers that we see, there's only 10 percent of treasures in the state, I'm gonna give this award. Wow. Congratulations.
Good job.
Yesterday, this is the winners from yesterday's high school English festival down Youngstown State, if you happen to see The Vindicator today, Mrs. Morelli was right on the front page, part of the scores and stuff, so. So, high school English festival winners, Gianna Arquilla, 10th grade, placed second place. Dominic Scandi, 10th grader, placed third place. An honorable mention in improv two writing. And Darian Arthur, 10th grader, placed first place in the writing game. So, congratulations to those three. This year, in our new league, they started also, not only do you get all-league honors, but you also, they do a academic all-league. So, the Mahoning Valley All-League Academic Winter Team for Boys Basketball, Mason Robinson, Dave Vega, Cole Grope, Nicholas McGinnis, Luke Campbell, Nathaniel Smith, Andrew Hyder, and Andrew Bouch were on the academic winter team. In girls' basketball was Grace McDevitt, Julia Bogdan, Emily Williams, and Megan Foltz, Ashley Cameron, Elisa Deek, Jenna Jones, and Dennis Saunders were the girls' basketball academic. Wrestling was Matthew Collins, Evan Mitchell, Jeremy Seka, and Ryan Staten were wrestling. And the cheerleading was Gianna Arquilla, Johanna Burnside, Jordan Stratton, and Carly Dillinger. So, it's kinda nice that the league not only honors the first and, or the team, kids to get the recognition, but they also do an academic team, so it's kinda nice. So, I'll just jump right into the administrative report. I think it was last week one day, Mrs. Williams's classroom was on, if you get like Armstrong, I think it was like Channel 19 or something, it's called Kids Corner, so they were on there for a whole half hour doing, presenting stuff in the kindergarten classroom, and it showed them actually doing lessons and stuff. It was really neat to see it on TV. United Way is gonna be starting their campaign again. United Way ties into C, Success by Six. United Way, Mrs. Fisk and I attended their annual dinner last week, and United Way sponsors Success by Six, which is available to the students coming into kindergarten. So, this summer, it'll be for the kids that'll be going into kindergarten in September. So, they actually pay for the teachers, the A's, and transportation for those kids for three weeks, so it's, it's nice that they get a chance to come in, get situated, get familiar with the classroom, and all the little things that you're not really used to at that age. You know, come up to the cafeteria, going through the line, getting the milk, things like that. So, you'd be surprised, kids learning how to open up the milk cartons and all that stuff, it's kinda fun. So, kids have a good time, plus they learn some stuff and get them prepared for kindergarten. JM Sports Club, Night at the Races, is actually this Saturday, the 21st, and I believe it's back at the American Legion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're back at the American Legion this week. Play production, The Butler Did It, is in progress, they're practicing quite a bit. It is Friday, May 11th, and Saturday evening, May 12th. The junior and senior prom is Saturday, May 19th. Promenade will be here at 5:00, and prom is at the Village Banquet in McDonald at 6:00. The elementary school PTA is having the Blue JK, they're actually, Abby Fish Tor is taking it over, and she is, I wanna say like, running like crazy with it. She has so many things involved, from things, activities for kids, from jump-arounds, and they're gonna have a little run-around at track for the younger ones. They're gonna do the 5K walk, or jog, whatever you wanna call it, and they're also gonna do the 5K competition, like a mutter, they call it, or whatever. So, they're gonna have a wall they go over, and a rope you gotta swing across from the mud hole, that one's more for the competitive type runners, so. She's doing a lot with it, so, and that is Sunday, May 20th. I believe, yeah, I think I got the right date there. The JM Sports Club is also having their annual golf outing, it's Saturday, June 9th, at Lakeside Golf Course, that's typically, it's either 8:00 or 8:30 shotgun start, it's usually a great day, a lot of fun. The junior high all-sports awards program is Thursday, May 24th, at 6:00. The high school spring sports award is Tuesday, May 29th, at 6:00. Congratulations, and she's actually here this evening, is our young women's With a Bright Future, so the YWCA, Cory Gross, and she happens to be here tonight to do another presentation, so congratulations. And your, how was your luncheon, your breakfast, I guess, right?
Good.
Holiday Inn, a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, it was good.
Good? Testing has been going very well, except for yesterday, we had a little snafu, if you saw in the paper, a lot of the schools couldn't test. The commercial is actually up and going, it's on, the new commercial is, been running for probably a week and a half, so they picked the time slots that they thought would be most beneficial to us, and if you remember, we allocate about one open enrollment student money for the commercial, so about, we put about $5,700 aside for the commercial, and it typically gets us our one student or more, so we've been doing pretty well with open enrollment lately, so I think it's very beneficial. Lot of good comments about it, and it's kinda focused more on the STEM type, you actually see some 5th graders doing some stuff with iPads and STEM, and our high school, physical graphics is in there quite a bit.
Do you think we could put a link to that commercial on the website?
Yeah.
I'm curious, I'm not seeing the commercial yet.
Yeah, usually you send those to us, Mr. Vega.
Yeah, I didn't get a copy yet, though.
Oh, that's, okay.
I would think as soon as I get it, I probably could, huh? Yeah, I'll call him tomorrow.
I don't know if there's any kind of copyright, but certainly, if it's our commercial, we ought to be able to.
No, we can't, actually, 'cause we did it one other time, I think, though, but we showed it one time here, so I'll call tomorrow, he usually sends it to me. Let's see here. Staff appreciation is in May, so we'll be doing that. We typically, the board buys the staff lunch, salad, and refreshments, so. Caitlin Amendalora was actually selected, she did, she presented to all the other art teachers at the county about international, how she learns international type of activities when she goes abroad, you know, she goes to Italy usually in the summer and learns stuff on her own, so she actually presented to all the other art teachers in Mahoning County, at the Mahoning County ESC. High school cheerleading also, I know we've honored them a couple times, but they actually were sent a certificate for their recognition, the General Assembly of the State of Ohio, Ohio Senate, coming from Mr. Senator Joe Chivoni, sent them honoring the Jacksonville High School Cheerleading Team for outstanding accomplishments, so I will give this to Mr. Vega, and he can present it to the cheerleaders, the coaches and stuff. And then, Mr. Snowden's actually here, too, been involved with some of this. The stadium lights, we've talked about a couple times, and Mr. Snowden was getting some prices for us, and the gentleman is going to actually rent a machine, so he can take the lights down, replace the current lights up there, and what, it's only gonna be what, $12,000, basically?
Yeah, a little, yeah.
Give or take.
For all-new fixtures and install.
Yeah, and they're gonna have that done as soon as they can, and then that way, if there is an issue, but they're thinking that should solve the problem with it being a little darker and stuff, so it should brighten it up some, and, I mean, if you remember, we were originally talking about $350,000 for lights, and, so, seemed like it kept going up all the time, but hopefully that's a fix that'll help us out quite a bit, but, and I guess it still could be even cheaper than that, depends on how long they have the bucket truck, so.
Good job, Mr. Vega.
So, that's a quick update on the lights, I added a couple things after the agenda though, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, actually, hopefully that'll do it.
I hope everyone heard that number. I mean, we just sent an email back to everyone, obviously you guys didn't see it, but, yeah, we heard, I was thinking our highest was 350 at one time, we were talking, and we went to 200, 100, and we had 40, so I sold 12,000, around about.
We'll be at a special meeting to discuss it.
Very appreciative.
We were relieved when we thought we were gonna be able to do it for 40,000, so the budget is down to 12, amazing.
Good job, Mr. Snowden.
Well, if we hang on, maybe we'll find a coupon.
The bonus is, all the housings for the old lights are aluminum, we can recycle that, so they'll, somebody come back from their aluminum.
Oh, there you go.
Keeps coming down. Senior Day, we're doing something a little different this year, and this is through Officer Bill Zanowski. On May 18th, we're gonna rotate, but this year, the Western Reserve Seniors are coming over here, and it's gonna be a whole day for seniors lined up, and some of the things that they're gonna be doing are, we're gonna be learning a little bit of self-defense, they're gonna be doing identification kits, drugs for performance, identity theft, they're gonna talk about binge drinking, and predatory lending, which is kinda big for kids who are in college, so, obviously, then next year, we'll, our seniors will go over there, but through the two officers, they have a resource officer also, and those two kinda work together on this, so that'll be May 18th. And Officer Zanowski also took our juniors to Hiram, I think it was Tuesday, for the None Under 21, said it went very well, kids had a good time, so they went up there. And then, the, the all-Mahoning County Schools Art Show is May 2nd, everybody's invited to, it is at the Career Center, the Joyce Program Center, from 6:00 is when you'd like kinda walk in and get refreshments and walk around, and then 6:30 to 7:30, they actually have a program over there for anybody that wants to go, so.
Now, do we have students representing in that show?
I believe we do, I'd have to ask Amendalora who, I just got this, so I wanted to bring it, but I do not know who yet, though. So, typically, we do. So, that is all I have for report.
Preachers report?
I only have one thing for this month, on page nine, you see the agreement for the, for the sign, the letter on the sign.
Oh, yeah.
See, there's an attachment on there, and so we're ready to go with that.
And the wording was changed.
Well, from what he originally gave us, we changed it all.
Okay.
The whole thing.
Yeah, we did.
If you remember last month, we talked about, so he wanted, they wanted to actually file an easement with the county, and that was our concern, so, for instance, our concern was, and we don't have any, right now, I have no plans to do this, but if we ever wanted to say, take a loan out on that property, you were gonna go do it with me, so.
So, the attorney looked at that, and everything's doing with the government.
And Gary, actually, M.P. already saw it, too, so.
The Citizen Association wants you to roll, sign up to football field, put electric sign inside, so we had to bring it written up, just for both sides.
Well, they wanna put a new one in, they're gonna put a new digital sign in, so it's the same place, but, you know, we just wanted to make sure everybody was understanding that whatever happens, it's their sign, basically. Nothing's ever easy, though, I never think everybody knows that.
Anything else you need to know? Legislative reports, Mr. Jones is not with us this evening.
He's next one.
Yeah, he'll get us, yes, he will. Okay, we're on to public presentation. The board will now be open for public discussion, under my direction, if you have something to say, please stand first, state your name, and then you can speak.
Hi, I'm Cory Gross, and I'm supposed to present my honors diploma, and I have papers for you, so can I just, just go?
Sure.
There are my volunteer hours for my field of interest.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to have, oh, sorry, Mom.
Here's your cap on it, though.
It's fine.
Thank you.
I'm supposed to have a certain amount of hours, and, well, not really, they don't know yet, it's like an open thing right now, we have no idea what the criteria is, but I'm.
Can you back up and tell them why you're here?
For my, what do you mean?
The State of Ohio changed the criteria for diplomas, and you can get what's called now an honors diploma, this is new this school year, and there are different avenues in order to get that honors diploma.
Yeah.
And she has chosen this as an avenue that was approved by Ms. Weary and Mr. Vega.
Yeah, the honors diploma is called Social Science and Civics, and it's brand-new, like, there's no really any rules, I just have to have a certain amount of hours for my field, presented to my board, have a certain GPA, you know, all the classes meet, so, yeah. But, so I wanna go to Lake Erie College, and I plan to dual-major in early education and special education, and pretty much this whole, like, experience has helped me, like, set my plan for going there and getting all of my stuff done, like, even like in high school, my first year of college, I get rid of eight classes since I'm in college classes now, 'cause it's gonna make it so much easier for me, and I'm so excited for it, and, yeah.
You save a lot of money, too, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's why she can dual-major.
Yeah.
It's very exciting, very happy for that. And, like, so with, like, this whole thing for my hours, for each thing, it's like a whole different experience, like, for the standball, when I was, I was a sophomore with my mom when she was working there, I worked with some of her friends who were teachers, and I got to work with, like, different students who didn't have the, well, I don't know how to explain it, but like the options we do at Jackson-Milton, like, they didn't have very much, like, hands-on with, like, special education unit, like, we have our own wonderful unit who are wonderful people, and they didn't have very much with that, like, I worked one-on-one with a student named Xavier, he had physical disabilities, he had lots of things going on, so I had to work one-on-one, and it was very emotional all the time then. And, like, for Sunshine Day Care, that's more recent, and that's in our own little town, North Jackson, and I got to work with, like, those kids, it's more like my area where I've grown up with these kids, I've, like, I know some of their family members, and it's, like, a whole nother thing, like, oh, you can talk to me about your older sister, I know about her, like, get to play with the kids, and they'll, like, read to them and help them with all that. And now, this year, actually, I also work now with the second-grade classroom in Ms. Pritchard and Ms. Howzers. I go down there every day during my sixth period, and I get to go work with them, like, whenever Miss G needs me, I'll be in the math stations, like, they do different stations, like, there's, they have to go around the room, measure certain things, or play a game, it's a lot of fun, like, seeing, like, all the different activities for these kids, like, helping them, like, identify what they need to do, like, adding, subtracting, like, just simple stuff is getting them going, and I'm able to help them, and it's, like, a wonderful experience for me. And, moving along this little list, I'm in the Helping Hands Program, so that helps with my special ed, like, my major, and I, I don't have that, like, experience every day in the classroom with, like, this type of kids, and I'm just, I'm so happy I was selected to go work with them, because it's like a whole nother world in there, let me tell ya, much better, so much nicer, so, like, pleasant and fun, 'cause, like, they always wanna have the kids happy, and, like, always just want them to focus on the work, get their stuff done, and socializing, like, work with everyday things, like, they have a jobs thing to do every day, they can organize socks, they can fold the socks, and they could, like, build the pipes, and it's so much fun to watch 'em, like, grow and do all that, and it's just so fun to be there with them for it. And I also work with PTA, babysitting their kids, which is not as fun. Let me tell ya, they're not fun to handle. Uh-uh, uh-uh. But, skipping that, 'cause, yeah, I've, like, ever, sophomore year, I think, they, Ms. Ray has volunteered me for it, and I was stuck with all those wonderful children, who loved to yell and run around in their little cafeteria. So fun. And, yes, and now, recently, actually, I'm like in a whole other area, where I'm in a high school now with this, in Youngstown, like, I've been working with that now for, like, a few months, yeah, since January, I'm still going to her now, next week's my last week, I, like, I don't know how else to explain it, it's a whole different area than here, like, I, as you can tell, it's from Youngstown, different culture, like, I don't see those types, any of those type of people, and it's, I get to have that experience with them, and have more variety with everything, and, like, I, when I'm with her, I learn how to organize and, like, basic teaching skills, like, I don't know how else to explain that, but, yeah, and sometimes I go with their early education lab, so I work with those kids as well in their preschool, so, like, they also, whenever I'm down there, it's like playtime, like, they either could draw, they could work with sand and build, and, like, they have to describe, like, what are you feeling, what are you building, like, it's so fun. All of this is so fun, and I just really hope you understand, like, I can't express enough how much I love doing this, and that I love all these kids and the relationships I'm building, 'cause it's crazy to have this in high school, I never thought I would, and have, like, such a set plan for all of this. And I have these note cards, I have not looked at anything, which is really sad. But, like, like I said, it's such a blessing to have this experience, like, in my high school, to be able to do all of these things, and get, like, all of my college classes, and still, like, sports, and all my other activities all work together, and it's so much fun. And I hope I proved my, like, nicely presentation, with talking a lot about children.
Yes, very nice job.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions about it?
Nicely done.
Very versatile.
I think you're the only senior this year doing this, too, right?
Yes. It's exciting.
How did you pick Lake Erie College?
Um, money, and I like the community, like, it's so small, and, like, it seems to, like, so supportive system, like, I already know their professors, I've known them for a while now, I've been off and on talking to 'em, and, like, they're so involved with the community, it's so crazy. It's in Haynesville, Ohio.
Haynesville.
It's nice.
Pass yard.
It's nice. I'm really excited about it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good.
Anyone else for public presentations?
My name's Borbady, and I'm resident of North Jackson, and I'm also here representing the North Jackson Business Association tonight, and I'm here to discuss a possibility of having basketball courts project, a co-sponsored project with the school district on possibly putting some outside basketball courts up, with the help of the North Jackson Business Association on the old school location, and I'm here to find out how much interest the school district has, and if they have any questions and pros and cons on putting the basketball court on the property, and how much interest there is with the school.
Where were you talking, or last question?
Well, that's, there again, I think that we would have to meet up here again and pick a location, but I guess, you know, through, through time, I'm getting steered to the far end of the parking lot directly across the street from the police station, there's a little square grass over there, and then I feel we could put a, a small-sized court, I'm, you know, I'm talking, you know, actually, I'd like to, you know, have three, three basketballs, one on the outside, and then, you know, the ones on the inside, but not a full wings court, and not full width, you know, just a outside.
I know when we originally talked, you were talking on the parking lot, but now you're talking in the grass?
Yeah, I, I, basically, I'm feedback that I've heard, you know, through the time about losing parking lots, you know, losing parking space.
Okay.
I mean, the reason why I originally talked about the blacktop, the expenses of base, base gravel, you know, and stuff like that, and been a lot, you know, less expensive of a project if we just put a skim coat of blacktop over the top of existing blacktop, and that would basically keep the price down, but I'm more interested in, you know, furthering the project than worrying about, you know, a couple thousand dollars worth of gravel. And, you know, I've had the trustees and the people across the street there express interest to me, why don't I bring it over on their property, because they're looking, they closed Liberty Park, so now our kids don't have really no place to go, and they tore down the playground equipment out of Liberty Park, and, you know, the kids don't have any place to go, the reason why, you know, we were discussing the school property was based upon the fact that the kids could be seen from the road as our residents driving in out of North Jackson, they could actually see our kids using it, and, you know, get a little excitement going.
Where did they wanna put it?
They want me to put, you know, behind the administration building.
Back by the gazebo or something?
Yeah, you know, over by the, by their drop-off locations, back in that area, and, you know, it's not a bad spot, you know, it's not a bad spot.
I didn't know where it was.
But it's not as good a spot as across the street on the school property.
I didn't, I didn't realize they took all the playground.
Yeah, all over the playground, just shut, the end of park shut down, you know.
Would you, is one of the options we consider besides the basketball court, they have maybe a gym set area or?
Well, possibly, that would be somebody else's project, if they wanted to add onto it, you know, we're basically talking a couple picnic tables and, and, you know, a couple hoops. You know, I did hear some feedback, Sterling's smiling, anyways, you know, he talked about McDonald having situations on the property, so during the past couple weeks, I contacted the McDonald Police Department and talked to their chief, and I also called Bracevilles Police Department and talked to their chief, and I got, you know, a good amount of feedback from both of them. You know, Bracevilles is a, is a single court, and it's fenced, and they're ecstatic with it, the kids are using it constantly, and the communities that I mentioned, and I also called Newton Falls's Police Chief, but I didn't get through to him, and I never got back to him, and he never called me back either, but, you know, and I talked to McDonald's Police Chief, and, you know, he mentioned that they have, you know, some situations down there, but he said that, you know, none of the, none of the situations arise until they put six basketball courts in, in four tennis courts, you know, when they had their single, or their two, two basketball courts, if you ran them smooth as silk, but when they enlarged it to six, six fenced-in basketball courts in the center of McDonald, and four fenced-in tennis courts, it's a beautiful complex, and it's nice, nice to see when you drive through a community like that, but they said that they, they attract sometimes over 100 people on the weekends, and, you know, it, it's causing their, their employees more work.
Yeah. Are you talking about, like, sometimes I heard there was a fence going around it, too?
Well, I, I would like to have a fence go around it, you know, I, it depends on, you know, how. on, you know, how, how, how much, um, how much help we can get if the school district's inter-interested in helping us financially, in a, in a, in a co-project, and then, you know, there's other, there's other organizations out there, right now, I know that the nice and pithiest that's in the center of North Jackson, they've already raised five thousand bucks for a project, but they've been sitting on this five thousand bucks for a couple years, and nobody's doing nothing. So, they've talked to the trustees, and they haven't, they haven't made a decision on where they're gonna put the new ceiling sets and the slides and stuff, so that, you know, they're, they're, they're sitting on five thousand bucks right now, and, and I haven't approached them, I've talked to Frank, but I haven't requested, you know, involvement, because I don't know where the school district stands, so, and, you know, that brings me to the point that right now, uh, the North Jackson Business Association is in the process of making our, our four-year book, I don't know, you've, you've seen the books through the passage, every business is involved in North Jackson, plus we have pages with the, with the, uh, the police chief and the fire department, and the school district, and the administration, and the trustees, so we have, you know, you know, pages that have all the important phone numbers on and stuff, but we're out there, you know, selling pages, selling advertisements, and signing up all the businesses in North Jackson to get into this book that we print every four years. So, you know, as we're doing this, I, I'm, I'm not able to say, are you interested in helping us with the basketball court, 'cause I don't know where we stand with the basketball court right now. I don't know if it's gonna, if the school district's still interested in it, and if they're not, then I have to pursue something with the trustees across the street, which they've already, you know, came to me several times about moving it over there, because they've, they've gotta get something going on, but, you know, I'm, I'm pro-school district, you know, I'm pro-Jackson Milton, and, you know, the reason why, you know, we're interested in doing this is for the betterment of our community, the betterment of our school district, it's not, you know, it's not for ourselves, it's for our students, and, you know, right now, there's a lot of negative things out there for our young kids to do, and get involved in, and, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to get something positive going on for our kids to spend time outside, exercising, you know, and, believe it or not, that will actually promote our community when people drive by and see our young kids, you know, hustling and, and playing basketball.
Did you, like, do you know how to approximate, like, what kinda, are you looking at for a total of the whole thing?
Well, I, I believe that if you do the project for ten thousand bucks.
One court?
Huh?
One court and paid.
One court and paid.
Would it be on the grass?
It, it would be on the grassy part.
Next to that business, next to that?
Yeah, next to the, yeah, next to your, that's a, that's a spot, you know, what I, what I'd love to have at my federated church in that big spot, of course I would love to have it there, but, am I asking too much for it to be there? I might be, because, you know, it's a valuable piece of property, too, and who knows what might take place there, you might have to, you know, put something there, but it's an opportunity to build upon this, you know, this could be, this could be phase one of getting maybe a, a tennis court up there, or, or something of that nature, or, you know, it, it just depends on how involved the school district wants to get.
Well, Bor, you know, I presented this initially, but you and I were talking about it, and there is quite a bit of land between the end of that parking lot and all the way over.
Right.
In the years for the future, so, wouldn't be the worst spot.
It, it's not the worst spot, and it's across the police, it's across the police station, you know, that's, that's, that's a very good location for our young kids to play, you know, because at nighttime, I, I asked them, how do you chase the kids out? And, and what they do, they drive by, they flash their light, "Please let, that means time to go," you know, so when it's time to go, and when it's getting to be dawn, the police will come by and flip the lights, that's how Briceville does it, they flip the lights twice, and the kids know, "It's time to get out of here."
The flag are going, "Yeah, you can't see."
So, you know, the, the, the location is, is a, is a great location, the amount of money that we're talking about is reachable, um, but right now, we're, we're, we're putting the drive on for our book, and while I'm talking to the business owners in North Jackson and the surrounding areas, I would like to also present them a form, you know, for a donation toward, you know, basketball courts.
I, I appreciate you coming to us, I mean, we have been speaking about this periodically for the last few months, um, and I think all of us here are in agreement that we are pro-kids, that's why we're all here.
Exactly, I'd want to.
However, we are in a district that actually has three communities, so we would have to have some additional information to be fiscally responsible for those three communities, as we've got Craig Beach, we've got Lake Milton, and we also have North Jackson. So, for me to actually say that I would be okay with spending X amount of dollars in North Jackson, I would have to really firmly believe that it's going to work out, that it's not gonna be more of a negative impact for us.
Well, I, I can tell you that, you know, North Jackson...
I don't want it to be a negative impact, because you are building a basketball hoop, you build it, they will come, so now we're inviting them to our facilities, and we, I could name multiple things that already need to be improved at our football field that we're inviting them to come to and possibly vandalize. They vandalized, or someone, they vandalized, the North Jackson Park, which is why it's no longer there.
That and the equipment.
So, I mean, it's a big picture, um, I love the fact that you're, you know, very willing and eager to raise money for our kids, 'cause it is for our kids, but our position is fiscally responsible for the district, so is it just the North Jackson kids that are gonna benefit, is it, I mean, there's a lot of things to consider, that's all I'm saying.
You know, I'd like to see the North, or the Lake Milton's, um, Business Association put their project together, and I'd like to see the Craig Beach put their project together. And, you know, at one time, we had, uh, our school district had a great presence in downtown North Jackson, which was the school. The school got pulled from North Jackson and put in Lake Milton, so now North Jackson is on the outside looking in as far as any involvement with the school district, or the school district putting any money into North Jackson. They put seventeen million dollars into Lake Milton in the past five years or ten years when we built this school district, and, and the things we've done outside this school district is on Lake Milton's property.
That is true, that, I mean, I don't know the exact dollar amount, but that is true, but we couldn't have built the facilities we have here on our property, I don't believe it's even an acre, is it, Mr. Baker?
Two and a half.
Is it, is it, I mean, so we wouldn't have been able to do that in that area?
Absolutely not, you know, and this was, you know, a lot of foresight, purchasing the property, the school district, the school board that was here when they purchased the property did a good thing, and the school board that was here, when we built the school district did a good thing, and it, it, it is centrally, centrally located, but, you know, you may or may not know about the, uh, the voting history involved in our school district. Craig Beach helped you pass your last levy, Lake Milton helped you pass your last levy, North Jackson helped you pass your last levy, that's your last levy. The levies before this, Craig Beach did not help you pass your levies, Lake Milton did not help you pass your levies, North Jackson did help you pass your levies. So, the majority of the, the majority of the people that vote yes for your school district's money has historically been...
Does that match up with the majority of where my students are coming from? Probably not. So now I'm putting money where I might not even have my students, I mean, I don't know how it shakes out, but I can, I can go back and forth if you want.
I'm telling you facts about voting, this is facts.
I don't disagree with those facts, but I can tell you facts about, you don't know where our students are from, so I'm going to spend X amount of dollars here and forget about the students here and here.
Kim, I, I used to drive in North Jackson to play with the folks behind the school, I lived in Lake Milton.
Well, that, that's one.
I think the thought process that, yeah, Kim's trying to talk about, so if we, even if we don't, even if we donate twenty-five hundred dollars towards the project, which is a, a drop in the bucket, and, and the overall investment, no matter who pays for it, is minuscule, right?
Right.
Well, we do that in North Jackson, and we know, historically, we struggle to get the votes in Lake Milton and Craig Beach, right? So we do that there, and then two years down the road, Craig Beach comes and says, "We wanna re-top this, this court out here in Craig Beach, can you donate some money towards that?" We're not, we're gonna have to, certainly, we did it in North Jackson.
You don't own that property, you know, you own this property.
True, but we're not wanting to go basketball court on that property, you know what I mean?
But Craig Beach has a facility already installed, it's up and running with docks and everything, and we have nothing, it's been taken away.
And basketball court, Craig Beach has basketball courts, Craig Beach has a sandballing court.
I guess what I'm getting at is, the concern would be, I don't feel, I mean, you insinuate that there is a, a kind of rivalry between Milton and North Jackson, or there, maybe there is a difference in the type of people in North Jackson and Lake Milton, but I don't really believe we have that.
Only thing I'm insinuating is the voting history.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't want to make a decision that might create more of a wall, or even a wall that doesn't exist, between the two communities. Right now, I think the two communities kind of work well together, work well with the school together, the school is in Lake Milton Township, but it is perfectly centrally located, I'd hate to do something or make a decision that could potentially create an issue there between two communities where there doesn't need to be one.
That's one, that's one.
Now, I'm not opposed, I think it's a great idea, I think we got, you got a lot of great things going on in downtown North Jackson, it's getting cleaned up, it looks great, I'm not, I think it's a fine idea. My personal concern, and I don't know if everybody shares that, is any financial investment from the school towards it, how it could possibly be viewed by people on the far side of Lake Milton or in Craig Beach who are so far away from it, feel disconnected from that. So, I, I see what you're saying, don't get me wrong, I completely understand, but, uh, that was just kind of my, my personal thoughts.
Well, that, that's, that's one way of looking at it, and, and in my opinion, that's a negative way of looking at it, you know, we should be looking at the positive things about it, and the positive things about it is, is keeping North Jackson feeling part of your, part of your school district.
I guess the thought that I have is, you're talking about ten thousand dollars, and you've already got half that raised, potentially.
We could be fully funded with your help.
You could be fully funded without a dollar from us in about a month, you could raise, you could raise ten grand in thirty days without hardly trying with the businesses in North Jackson, I don't know that you would need our financial help to do it.
Bor, where we, when do you actually need a decision?
We're missing a board member.
I don't need a decision tonight.
That's what I'm saying, we're missing a board member, so...
Yeah, right.
And then, how much do, like, so if that place would chip in five, how much do you guys have?
We're sitting on about three thousand right now.
So you're really looking for two to three thousand?
It could be more, correct, there's not a hard number on this ten.
I mean, I, I, I did the hard number, but it's been a couple of years, you know.
Don't worry about that, I can cover that.
I actually, I think I'm thinking about this, too, nothing came into my mind at all towards negativity about, you put that in Jackson, that, that didn't enter me at all, I'm, I'm just trying to think big picture, um...
Sorry, my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I know, it's...
Are you going to put a fence around it?
That's, that's... Absolutely, the, the street side will have to have it, regardless.
Just to stop the balls from...
Right, exactly.
For safety. You're better off, I would think, to start, and to make it cheaper, if you just put one, right, maybe a ten-foot fence on the side.
Hi, okay, so, you're, I'm Jennifer Lyne.
Hi.
So, if they own, the school owns the property, okay, so, with that being, doesn't that kind of cover the cost of the, of the school covering down a little bit? I mean, because if not, you're gonna have to go to another lot and do that, so that's just like, I'm just asking that question, that helps out tremendously, they do have a great location, it is perfect, right across, it is, you can't, I don't think you could ask for another best location, especially during football games and et cetera, et cetera. But if they're gonna sit there and go, "I'm gonna plot out this for you," 'cause they're not using it right now, that's kind of like their donation, I see it that way, their donation to, because, to that park, so it's, say they don't, that they're not able to donate the money, they're plot, they're giving you that section, which kind of does make it happy on both sides.
That's, that, you know, if I could get a, if I could get a commitment, that would be probably sufficient, that I would like to, you know.
So that if, if you did fundraise the money, and they don't have to put the money in, I mean, they are adding that to it, now, who's gonna be in charge of maintenance of that, is that gonna be the school to, like, clean up the trash and mow and weed whack? Who's gonna be in charge of that?
We mow and any guy.
You mow anyway.
It wouldn't be our property.
No, I, I...
What we're doing is, you know...
Actually, we're gonna be cutting back on your mowing.
Right. On the whackup.
Right.
I mean, it's not gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be the North Jackson Business Association's, um, basketball court.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the school's property.
Hey, Bor, thanks for, thanks for coming, first call. I've heard about this, and I've gone back and forth, to be honest with you, tonight I feel a little better, I mean, if it would be where you want it, you know, across from the police building there, just for security, and hopefully it would be, we, we could take away the issue of, you know, a problem or nuisance, you know, with the other community problems, so that's the positive, the downside that I've struggled with is just feeling, uh, guilty, I mean, if we leave that property, because I truly, I mean, you guys aren't gonna like hearing that tonight, but I don't think it's fiscally responsible to have two separate properties.
It'll be about a year's, though, Tom, if I've heard of it.
Right, I know, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna cost you guys a major investment to move that, uh, to move that stadium, so, are we talking five, ten, fifteen, twenty years?
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, we almost need to have, like, a five and ten-year plan before we could, you know, talk about that, but I just feel like, I didn't realize there was such a feeling that we're separate still.
I mean, I, I never once said we felt separate, all I did was tell you about the history of the voting in our school district.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
But why bring it up if you don't think we're separate? That was the reason we brought it up.
So you know who supports your school district.
I already know who supports our district, sir.
What he means is traditionally, every vote, we blocked it out, Milton, Craig Beach failed it, Milton Phil Jackson brought it home, it's an important point, because that, that you gotta have levies to keep this place going.
You know, all I'm telling you is facts.
I need to say something here, it's Jackson Milton, it's Ben Jackson Milton in my entire lifetime, it's about time that we get done with this, Jackson is one thing, Milton is one thing, Craig Beach is one thing, that's the school district.
Right.
Whatever we do in this district benefits all of those entities, not just Jackson Township, or not just Milton Township, or not just Craig Beach. The merger of Jackson and Milton came about, what, in the nineteen forties or the nineteen fifties, when it became one school district? It's time that we become one school district, and think about all the kids in the district, and that's usable by every kid if they wanna go up there. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea, maintaining it, we don't have a problem with maintaining it, but I think it's time we become Jackson Milton as a whole, and not as three separate entities.
Dean, I haven't thought about that for, ever, the long time that we're three entities, so, if, if that's still out there, that's too bad, but it's not in my mind.
Yeah, it's still out there.
I don't hear that, Bor. Right. But, uh, yeah, I mean, give us a month to figure this out, and I'll give you a call and talk to you, 'cause we need to, actually, probably next month, we need the fifth board member, really.
Very good.
I see this as getting, I'm doing additional things for the kids on that land that's just sitting there.
I guess you have a question I would have, is what's your thoughts on, so, whoever donates however much money, it gets done, who's then responsible for maintaining, if a pole gets knocked down, or a car drives into one, or a rim gets bent, or a net needs replaced, the ongoing maintenance of the facility, is that the North Jackson, is this association gonna continue to, to maintain it, or is that gonna be the responsibility of the, of the school district?
It's our problem.
It would be yours, it would, it would become your property.
But there, there's not a whole lot of maintenance on a basketball court.
Couple now.
No, yeah, I, I was just curious, what your vision was for, who was gonna handle maintaining it.
And you get my... My vision is, you know, getting a basketball court built for, helping, just helping to get a basketball court built on the school property, for our students.
And you'd have to get the hoops, truthfully, that, you know, kids can hang on it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
But, I mean, this week, kind of got a good update and stuff, we kind of go back and forth and hearing stuff, so it's good, and then I can meet you down there, and...
Right, I just wanted, you know, come to the school board here.
And my idea, if you want somebody for, uh, maintenance, just on the minor maintenance, you can sponsor the boards, the back of the boards.
Oh, yeah.
Very simple.
You can have signs around, around all the fence for that.
A hundred dollars a year per hoop, that's three hundred a year, that's plenty for maintenance.
Sounds like you gotta volunteer.
Well, we are volunteering. We're volunteering our time and our effort, man.
So, and, and the other, just feedback I have in general, so we can move on, is, you've mentioned something about the size of it, I, my only recommendation would be, if you're gonna do it, make sure the three-point, it's at least large, wide enough that the three-point line extends all the way around, if it's too small, kids can go to Lordstown, nobody uses that court up there, it sits there vacant.
Right, you're right. The reason why they don't use it, because they can't be seen from their friends driving by, I'm, I'm telling you, if they could be seen from the road, that, that place would by. I'm telling you, if they could be seen from the road, that, that place would be haunted.
Not to mention you've got the football field and everything else right there. Kids, when they're, when the football games are going on, there's gonna be kids playing basketball too.
You know, there's, there's hoops behind St. James Church on Long Road. Do they play behind the church?
No. They just don't have a park now. That's the, we gotta put it, we gotta get them somewhere, keep them active.
You don't have a pretty nice transport for that kick out to the road.
So, we'll revisit that, thank you so much. Any other, any other public presentation? We even went to roundtable. We should've done that before public, but, how about that? Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to add?
I guess I don't have any particular topic, just kind of an overall comment, I guess. It's been six months since I was elected on the board, and I'm going into my fourth meeting here, four months, and as my wife and I discussed this venture, one of our biggest concerns was the phone calls, and the angry complaints, and parents, and how much of my time is gonna be occupied on the phone. Like, don't worry about it, probably only be one or two phone calls a week. In four months since the first of the year, I've not got a single angry phone call. I've not, I mean, you talked to some people here and there, but nothing bad about a person, a teacher of the school district, and I'm extremely impressed and encouraged, and I think that points to our administration, our school board, our teachers, and the job that they're doing. So, I've been very encouraged after four months that I haven't had the negative type of phone calls, that I'm halfway expecting. So that, that does encourage me a lot.
I'll call you later.
I have some questions concerning the agenda.
Yep.
Because we're signing off on all this, including.
Thanks, Tori.
Thanks, guys. Including G, which is some changes in the board policies. And I don't know if we've talked enough about this business advisory council, I don't know that I understand it enough.
Let's run through the Mahoney County ESC, they actually do that for all the schools. That's the same as it's been. These aren't new policies, most of them are, most of them just have like a, the new part in them is the dark part, like, we already have them, so the new, if you can see the bold part on it, that's the, that's the one part that's really changing.
Okay.
The ESC runs that committee for all the public schools.
So what have, what have they done, what have, how we benefited from the business advisory council? Who's been on it? Something I've really been aware of.
We didn't really talk about too much, just something that they do for.
It's a required policy.
I can get back to that.
Okay.
Little G, I think, but I don't know.
G, and it was, uh...
I don't know.
But, uh...
Okay, that's fine, I get it.
They're an outfit of lawyers, though.
Okay, so, more detail on that. On the second, third, the emergency management and safety plans, does the board have access to the plans?
No.
Twelve and thirteen, is that new? And is this pertaining to the whole transgender, I'm sorry, twelve and thirteen on G, non-discrimination?
No, that's, that's been in place, it's just that we have to designate someone this year who's charged.
Okay, so.
So you see I filled in on the bottom, I think, or that's, not on that page, but.
Are you looking at the bottom where I put my name and that? No, no, my question was, if it was changing, anything that had to do with the whole, I feel like I'm this today, and I feel like I'm that tomorrow, transgender stuff, is that included in there?
No, you're talking about the social awareness of policy, right?
Well, it's, it was in, it was in something that was part of the pact that was saying, and I apologize, uh, but I don't have with that to add. But do you know who I'm speaking to?
I do, but all the policies that you're basically voting on, except for two and three, we have to pass. The only ones, you would see where we circled permissive language, it says, and a couple that says permissive language, so you pick one of the two.
Okay.
Like on smoking, for instance. An example, you could pick designated areas, no smoking on campus, and vehicles and all that, so we picked them. All these other ones are required policies.
If that could be found out somehow, if they've changed anything with this standardized thing, if it had to do with transgender stuff, I would be at least interested in that. Um, what do you want? Release time for religious instruction, I guess I never paid any attention, but that's been there forever?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we do. We don't, if you can read, I think that was one of the ones we had to pick, though. I mean, I kinda need, like, the number on the top right, though, that's what I don't know.
I just have letters on the agenda.
Well, just the letters. If you know what letter you're talking about, I can look it up here, but.
J E F B.
J?
J E F B. And it was towards the bottom, like the third to the left.
Okay, I'm on J E F.
Alright, thank you.
Do you see the difference is what they're, they're lined through?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did you look at the actual policy image?
I did, and I saw something in, thank you.
That is brilliant, yeah.
These are invented, too, you know, by our school boards, to comply with federal law in this particular case.
So like, if you're looking at that, J E F B, what's crossed out is what they're taking out. If there's something in gold, that's what they're adding, from our current policy. And then we send these down after you vote on them, and then they send us an updated policy report, okay? And once you vote on them, and we send them down with the corrections and stuff, and they send it back, it's about a two-month turnover, turnaround before we get it.
Thank you. And then, open enrollment numbers, I was just curious if we had any hard numbers, growth-wise?
Well, we're at 153 this year coming in, coming here, that's an all-time high.
Already?
No, so this year.
Oh, with this.
For next, for next year, we're down a little bit, but we, the letters aren't doing yet.
There's still, uh, 153.
That's wonderful.
That's the, that's an all-time high. And we have 100 and up, approximately 111 leaving. Which is down, because some of them, and actually, it should actually get better, because the ones that are leaving are the ones that are, like, more in high school. seniors, and more seniors than we have.
Yeah, it's interesting though, anybody has, anybody going into kindergarten this coming, this coming school year, registered right now, we have five sets up with.
That's just nuts.
So as soon as school starts, we got the news ready to come out and do a story on that.
That's crazy, though.
I see that there's a big push because of people who selected, uh, period of education, but how, do you two know how the charter school funding, which is increasing, is going to impact us, public schools? Obviously, it's a negative, but, John, what are you doing about that?
Not as much as would be charter schools. Actually, our numbers have been going down a little bit, Mitch.
No, I'm sorry, bigger picture wise, they're, they wanna pour more money into the charter schools, and how that was gonna impact.
No, I thought it was the opposite down, from the article I read, but.
Well, I mean, if you're going back like a year ago, some of the money, we got less in federal money. It's not impacting, we didn't get impacted by general fund money, we got impacted by federal money.
Okay.
But every school did, and that was, for a lot of reasons, I mean.
Well, the person they put in was a former charter school person.
What I read was, we did lose a lot, though, in federal money.
Right.
Mitch, I haven't seen our numbers, as far as dollars leaving the district, increase due to charter, they actually side a little, tied a bit.
I know you always talk about.
We only had one kid in ECO.
Is ECO done now? Do they go to fund trade?
Yes, they're done.
But we followed that, we only had the one, one first grader, I think it was.
We had one student.
I think it was a first grader.
ECO was a scam, and a proof to be, because it's out, it's out of business. And I think, I think that's awesome, but some of the, we're, we're making the front page of the list.
Ms. Merle.
Front page, yeah. That was Ms. Merle?
Yes, she's actually, our kids go down and participate in festivals, she's actually part of the committee, she's one of the judges.
How many did we have, though?
Two.
Yeah, do you know?
I don't, but I know we have three or four teachers that go down to participate.
How many high schools?
Well, high schoolers total, it was, yesterday it was 12.
Yesterday was 12, and then the middle school go on a different day?
They go tomorrow.
Oh.
It's freshman, and seven through nine go a different day, and 10 through 12 go.
Well, at such a rate, you did an excellent job.
Well, our kids did good down there, I mean, they have a great time, too, and they learn quite a bit, not just, even if you don't go down there and win, you learn quite a bit down there.
Can I rewind one second?
Absolutely.
He was going through the policies, it reminded me of something I noticed, and I don't know if it's worth discussing or not. The, I noticed the e-cigarettes are not included in tobacco policy. You know, you can smoke anything through those e-cigarettes, and you can't smell what you're smoking. Somebody could be smoking at a game, smoking marijuana, and you can't do anything. If you included these cigarettes in your tobacco policy.
But they are actually, they have a whole separate policy, our kids cannot, because that's actually, uh, the news called a couple places the other day, they wanna know, and we do treat e-cigarettes as tobacco.
So even an adult on a football team would not be allowed?
Right, very good. They, now, our policy is, they leave the gate at, you know, they, but they can't actually sit in the stands and smoke these cigarettes. Because I remember last year, we actually asked someone to leave doing that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Are you done, Mr. Mashon? Okay, Mr. Huff?
Well, you guys saw the email, but I didn't get to call anyone to see the requirements, but, I don't know.
I'll check into that, you're talking about our, our fishbowl graphics.
Oh, yeah.
And the fishbowl graphics program for the, yeah, I presented the Capitol Conference this year.
If they meet their requirements, I think it's wonderful.
It says like, uh.
Well, I don't know.
Program.
I think you're, a couple things, one would be requirements to get an award. The other is, you can just sign up to do a.
A presentation.
Presentation on your class. It's two different things, but I'll check on both of them.
Yeah, I was thinking a little up there.
Actually, we have, I was talking to the superintendent from Campbell, so they're gonna come out, they're starting one next year, they're gonna come out with our printer, because we were talking about 54 inches wide, one of the largest in Mahoney County, so they're actually gonna come out and take a look at that.
So I was thinking, it won't be long.
Yeah.
Before they'll be.
Yes.
A lot of schools that have, if we show, we're already leaving.
They can call down to OSBA.
You know, I checked over the website, but I didn't, couldn't see.
They, uh, they're always looking for presenters, though. I don't know about the actual awards, but they're looking for presenters.
That would be nice to take some students down there to do that.
It was, uh, three years ago.
Yeah, not on that, but.
Yeah, that's all I have. I guess, just to rewind, Mr. Hempel, are you looked over that agreement, correct, before you voted on it?
Yes.
And I think, John, did you just go, we made the changes that we talked about.
Okay, and I signed it.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on it tonight, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, sir.
We actually talked about it before we got here.
Okay, did you start at 7:00 on night, or?
6:30.
Oh, okay. That's why.
No, that's okay, but we did talk about it before.
Yes.
We went over the changes, and we mentioned that you were in, so I thought we were on the same page.
Yep.
So, okay.
Um, I just had a couple things. It is softball and baseball season, and it's been a really, um, a wet season. It's been very rough on our athletes. Um, if you get a chance, if there is a game, come out and support. It's always nice to have you guys there. Also, last night, I do wanna mention, Sebastian Lay had a no-hitter, which is amazing. So, if you do get a chance to see him pitch, he's talented.
19 strikeouts last night.
It was amazing.
70 strikeouts for the season. He had 70 strikeouts all last season. He's already at 70 this year.
Really amazing.
Wow.
And we were freezing, and the boy is pinching like nobody's business. So it's just, it's nice. So, I'm hoping he does well. I'm assuming he's going to college for that.
Late night, too, that's why it's so cold, right? They were down at Bean Park, 10 o'clock.
It was, oh, yeah, it didn't end until then, it was.
And then it started raining on top.
It rained, and it snowed, and it's just a great season.
But that's a nice place to play.
It is.
Great, or fields are like the Indians, really.
They are. Um, I noticed that you added on page eight, H, recommend that we approve the request of professional leave for two teachers to attend literacy collaborative projects. I'm curious, um, I'm familiar with the project. Is that something that our elementary is interested in possibly adopting, um?
Yes, they've been, uh, actually, it was Doty and Amanda who went and listened to that whole series in, uh, over the summer, and they are all in on that, that program.
I mean, it's a massive undertaking?
Yes. It's supposed to be tied in with the grant, if the ESC gets the grant.
Okay, so it's actually included in the grant, because, I mean, you would need a coach, I mean, it's, it's.
And, uh, we might add Tricia Petura once ago the same day, but I told her she's on hold till we check on subs and stuff that day. Then, the next day is for grades three and four. And I had two today that we did not get on there yet, for the ninth, because they're the eighth, I think, right?
Yeah, they are the eighth.
So, third and fourth grade is the ninth, and I think there's two people that wanna go the ninth, that'll probably end up going, but I didn't get them on there. And Tricia might go the eighth, if we're got covered.
That's the first, we've narrowed it all from the board's perspective.
Okay.
Um, so that's why it came to my attention. Um, and that's the one we did through the county, correct? And we didn't actually see the grant.
They didn't, they don't know if they got it yet.
Right, right. So we didn't know what actually was in the grant. We know it took, we knew it took a lot of hours and stuff, but we didn't say it's up.
It's called.
I don't know.
21.
Okay. Um, that's all I have. Did you have something else?
Just to digress.
Okay.
Uh, the gentleman, the CFO for Ohio, I can't find his name, he and I have traded voicemails with regards to our funding, school funding.
Oh, you know, I have things to add about that also.
Are you talking about, uh, 2.7 million? Do you know the names?
I have.
Bill?
Uh, it's the CFO for Ohio.
I have it here.
But anyways, he's gonna.
Prentisol.
No, his name is, uh, his name is David Shobin. David Shobin.
Okay.
He's the CFO, so what did he say to him?
We just traded voicemails.
You know, I actually talked to someone in the department, a female in the department, had a wonderful conversation with her. Basically, in summary, we are on the list. That money is going to come to our district, we are on the list. She told me the percentile we were, um, when our number gets called, we will be on the list. But even when we get added to the list, it's going to take probably 10 years for it to actually happen. So, it's going to be a great deal of time. But they did assure me that we are still on the list, that this funding will occur, but they're going to do, by the time you get to the list, they do a market study, is the way that I understand it. And they reassess your property, and they will tell you what you need. So, um, they'll do whatever they want, give us or not give us anything they want.
And remember that they would reassess the elementary school to see if it needed torn down, which doesn't need torn down.
Well, not now, but in 10 years, you might be in a different spot, I mean.
Basically, it's a play line that's delay all the time, is, you're, you're in the process, and we keep getting bumped down.
And that's what my conversation was with Bill Prentisol, was on the legal aspect of things, which he couldn't answer. I asked him, I said, what was involved legally as far as timeframe when we did this? And I had notes in front of me. He didn't have the answers, and that's why he referred me to the CFO. So that's right, the road I'm going down. Was it legally, what we were told?
Yeah, I didn't heard of that name that you mentioned, though.
The what?
The name that you mentioned, I never heard of.
Yeah, but, you know, he might have it in his pocket.
Are we ready to approve the consent calendar? Is there any other questions, or anything else from any of us?
Well, page four, I don't know.
Adoption of the consent calendar.
So, Mr. Campbell? Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Pittman?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming.
We're gonna go into executive section.
Yes, we are.
We have to make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Drive, here, you can drive, so, get you a copy.